Good afternoon, everybody. At this time, I'd like to welcome you to the Paulding County Planning Commission meeting for the month of September. I hear jingle bells off in the distance. So if y'all would please at this time, it reminds me to ask you to turn any audible devices off or to silence so they don't interrupt the proceedings of this meeting. We are going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. Those instructions should be located at the back table in this room if you'd like to take a copy for a little bit of reading. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of this body. Ask the Planning Commission, have y'all had an opportunity to review the minutes? Have you any comments or requested edits? If not, somebody make a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele. Have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes.
Abstain is the one we're... Should I abstain?
I don't think you have to abstain. You're just approving the... Okay, so six, zero, and one. Again, the Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body, meaning that we will take a look at each application that comes before it. We'll entertain questions, presentation by the applicant, questions that may come to them. Each presentation on behalf of each application is allowed 15 minutes, and that is cumulative time for anybody else who would wish to speak on behalf of the application. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the application would also have a cumulative 15 minutes' time, meaning that if you have anybody lining up behind you to speak, you should be courteous of their time as well. All recommendations are, will be forwarded to the legal entity responsible in this jurisdiction that the application resides in. I believe all of these are Paulding County. So it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of Paulding County Board of Commissioners at seven o'clock. If you are the applicant, you are required to be there for the application to be heard and considered, and if you have any vested interest in it, for or against, I would recommend that you be there. All questions from anybody who comes to the lectern needs to be directed to the chairman, which is myself. Any questions that we determine need to be asked of the applicant, I will redirect once all the questions have been received, and I'll bring the applicant back forward. Applicant can use all 15 minutes of their time or reserve some for rebuttal, and again, that is 15 minutes cumulative for anybody else who wishes to speak on behalf of the application. I will ask Mr. Robinson, do I have anything that you need to mention? If you would then please, let's proceed with the first application.
Good afternoon, everyone. The first application is 2021-16Z, application by Stephen W. Brooks requesting to rezone three acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B2 Highway Business for the purposes of operating a construction business office. Property is located in Land Lot 844, District 2, Section 3. It's on the south side of Hiram-Sutie Road, west of Cochrane Ridge Road. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff is recommended denial with, and if the board chooses to approve, seven conditions. And just to note on condition number four, there was a misprint. It should say owner developer agrees no liquid petroleum will be located on the property for business use. We have received numerous calls and emails and actually some visits from adjoining property owners, neighbors in opposition, and the applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in at the lectern, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. To the lectern right over here.
Come here, can't see it. Stuff is messed with my eyes. Just... Can't see. Go ahead. Thank you for giving me the time, Mr. Chairman. The only reason I'm sending in this application is because we've had a business there for five years, since the 60s. Excuse me, my breath is low because I've had COVID, and it's for the last two months. This is the earliest I've been out of the house, so I'm trying to work through this, which is why she's up here, okay? Because the county requires you to, if you've got a business, it's got to be on commercial to have your business or special permission of some sort. So we weren't aware of those things. It was a church since the 60s. We bought the property to make it a church, and this was, or keep it a church, and this property was used as that. We had about 60 to 90 people per week, three times a week, usually 40 to 50 during the week for church. We have the property to have an office in it now, which is just office work, and our guys, once or twice a week, may come by and pick up paperwork and leave their trucks to just drive their vehicles for personal use. But it's not for any kind of construction goods, and I don't understand why it got said "construction." I don't remember saying it, maybe it was my fault, but all we're doing is testing. We test petroleum products at their stores, not there at our place. So all we do is generate paperwork from there, and the guys do their work out in the field. They carry their equipment on the trucks, and it's not left on the property other than in their trucks. There's no petroleum products. At one time, we had a petroleum product, and matter of fact, I think, I haven't been there in two months because I've had COVID, so I'm just trying to run off my memory right this minute. But we've got a container that was given permission to put product in when everything went down, and they closed the country down for the COVID. We had to have gas, so we had the gas brought to us so we could keep our guys going because we were essential to keep the stores open and also public works and other things by keeping our business going, because we do federal and state testing for them. So basically, that's the only time that we usually have any kind of product of any kind out there, and I haven't had to do that the whole five years except for just recently because who knew we was going to shut the country down? And getting gas was a problem for just about most people. So that's the only time we've had product out there, or gas out there. And the container's still there, but I can get rid of that. I just haven't, haven't been there in two months. My wife's been trying to handle things. We got, we made up copies or answers to everything that, or to everything that was presented with your paperwork to us. If, do we need to hand that out to you so you see our answers for it?
If you've got information you would like for us to see, you can pass that among us. You can also address it if you wish. This is your time to use.
Why don't you read it out? Okay. Want your time because we need some...
Do I need a signing as well?
Only if you're speaking.
We're aware that the property's own residential...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you give us your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Carol Brooks. I'm his wife. I apologize. So like he said, we purchased the property as a church. We kept the church open from 2010 to 2013 when we had to close the church. We had a five-year loan on that with Regions Bank, and 2015, Regions came to us and said, "Are you prepared to pay the balance in full?" We were not. She said, "The only way we can refinance this loan is if it is owner occupied." She said, "You have to assume, you have to be in the building for us to refinance the loan, or you have to pay the loan in full." So, you know, she said, "What's the problem? Why don't you just put your, you've just got a little office, put your office in the basement." So that's what we did in 2016. So we've been there since January of 2016, to my knowledge. You know, we've not harmed anybody. We've made four changes to the property in five and a half years. When we first moved there, we put up a privacy fence because some people thought the church was still open, and we didn't, our office is not open to the public. Nobody comes to it. We don't sell anything from there. So what UPS may deliver office supplies, but we had people coming up thinking the church was open, wanting donations, wanting help, so we put up a privacy fence. Last year, he put a new roof on. We put up a barn that's not for use for business, that's for his personal tractors.
Stayed on that property.
And, yeah, it's not even on the three acres, and then we had to widen the driveway. So in five and a half years, we've not really changed anything there but minor changes. We have no desire to change anything there. In fact, if we didn't have to ask for it to be changed to commercial, we wouldn't because we have no plans to ever make it commercial. We have no plans to sell it to anybody else. We're building our forever home behind there, so we have no desire, just like our neighbors, to have businesses all around us. We want it to remain residential. The only thing we want to do is, you know, just keep our little office there. That's, and there's, there's five people, including me, that come to that little office, and again, no, it's not open to the public. Nobody comes there. We push paper. Our guys turn in paperwork once a week. We scan those into the system. We download the files. We send them to the customer, and we email them to the state and federal authorities that they go to. That's, that's all we do. We don't manufacture anything or sell anything. So as far impact to the area, when we were a church, we had electric bills of $500 a month, water bills of 70 and 80. We barely topped 200 now. Our water bill's $10 a month. There are five people there. As far as traffic, we used to have 40 and 50 cars coming out. There's five during the week. The guys come once or twice a week, like he said, and there's four of those. So, you know, we've decreased, it's not even as much as it was when there was a church there, as far as impact goes. Again, we're not requesting to rezone it, to sell it to some big developer that's going to put a business there. It's not what we want to do. If we could just keep our little office there without rezoning it, we, you know, we'd be happy to do that. So when we ask what we needed to do to keep our office there, this is what we were told to do, so we're here. But again, we don't want to change anything that'll impact our neighbors or the land or take its value down or any of that.
Mr. Chairman, how much, how much time do we have remaining? I didn't even look.
You have about four minutes remaining.
Okay, we want to reserve that for rebuttals.
Questions from the board or from the Board of Commissioners? Planning Board or Board of Commissioners do not account against either the applicant or those who may speak in opposition. So at this time, I'll open the floor to questions to the applicant. And my first one is, are you running, do you run trucks or dispatch trucks out of that facility?
No, the guys take them home with them. They keep them at their house usually. When they go on vacations, they may leave them and park them there for us to keep an eye on it ourselves because, you know, we want to keep our things safe. We got $40,000, $50,000 of test equipment in the vehicles, so each one of those, we got to keep it protected, you know? So we let them, leave them there instead of at their house because it's more protected with us having it and our cameras watching it. They don't come in every morning in dispatch. We used to have it done that way, but because of the gas problem, it was best that they went home because it made shorter distances and it saved on the gas.
When you said "used to," how long ago was that?
Right before the country closed down. I mean, we had like three, three or four of them. They took them home the whole time they were hired in, but there was newer guys. We've got, what, five testing right now? We got two guys that were bringing them in because we weren't used to them and we didn't know their habits. So we had to bring them in and come in and leave from there each morning.
Any questions to the applicant?
Do you have any disabled vehicles on your property?
Not disabled. I can, everything I got can run, but I've got four, five ambulances that were work trucks. My intent was to have them moved two months ago, but I got down with COVID, and I've been down, and I haven't had a chance to get them moved. I do have plans for it. I've set up plans, but haven't been able to follow them through. We, we had a meeting set up here twice, and I couldn't make it because of the COVID. I stayed in the hospital a good long time. I didn't even know if I was going to make it to be here, in fact, so for this one.
And you say you've had a life, you've had a business there for five years?
Yes, sir. We were...
Have you had a county business license there for five years?
We were getting one from Hiram because we ran the business out of our house from Hiram City, and we thought that's all we had to do because we were still in Hiram. But when I put in applications to put my dad in a trailer on the property adjacent to us, and then to build our home in the back, that's when it all came to my attention that we had a problem there, and I didn't realize it till then. I know ignorance isn't an excuse, but we just didn't know.
Where was your address in Hiram?
29 Dallas Street, right behind the post office.
Okay.
On your business license, have you ever had a business license with this address, with this property?
Just from Hiram City. I didn't know we had to have it from Paulding.
I know, but was it, was it this address of this property you're asking for rezoning? Was the address on the business license this property?
Next one.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the staff.
I didn't know.
I have a question for staff. Does this conform with the future land use map?
Mr. Leggett, we look at that as a part of the rezoning effort, the process, that it matches the comp plan. This does show this more community residential area. There was one zoning you see at the top up there, the red on the, on the map. That was done back in the 80s. There hasn't been a lot of change in that area for quite a while at this time, and it's not anticipated. One thing we did list in there, if the Planning Commission Board chooses, is we did put a stipulation that it would only be this business that can operate under this commercial district. Any other business would have to come back through the zoning process.
You stated it doesn't meet the 2017 comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
And Mr. Brooks, you stated that you don't have a business license in the county, but you had one in the city.
Hiram City.
Did you not think that you needed one in the county when you opened the business?
I, I didn't know. I'll be straight with you, my wife dealt with things like that, and all I did was see a business license on the wall, and I'd say, "How did you get the business license this year?" And it would come up, and that's all I ever paid attention to, so. I mean, that's still ignorant, so I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
And there is a sign, a church sign out there, and I don't mind taking that down.
That marquee's been there a while. I don't live far from you.
Yeah.
And that marquee's been there.
And anything I need to do to move it, and we could even put the fence back up because I took it down to move my dad's trailer in, widen that drive that goes to the back. So I can move the trailer, I mean, the sign down if I need be or whatever needs to be done with it, and we'll sign whatever you need to sign. If you want us to say that we'll never sell the place for commercial property, we'll sign that. You know? I mean, whatever it takes. We just want to keep our business there.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Aye.
The building on site, is that a middle building, and if so, how many square feet is the building?
It's an old, older double-wide, which we've remodeled a lot of. How old is that building? It's been there since 63, I think. It's got a full basement, concrete basement, and the upstairs as well, sanctuary and all that, but I don't know what else to do with it if it isn't used for that, you know?
Miss Seaver, do you have a question?
Yes. I was counting it when off. I think there was about, when this aerial shot was taken, there was like seven vehicles. Was that when it was a church? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I can't, I can't make it out there. Oh, is it there?
Thank you. 10 vehicles. Do you know if that was...
Well, you got five girls that come in every day.
Okay, so there's five vehicles there?
There, and then Carol, come in, can you help me?
I'm sorry. I mean, was this, was this taken during the time that it was a church, or was this taken during the time that it was?
This is the time of business. I can see that. When did you take this? I'm sorry.
Miss Seaver, this, this aerial photo would have been February, March-ish of this month, or this year.
Oh, okay.
So those one, two, three, you see three ambulances there. Since then, I've taken two more. They're up towards the front of the property, towards the road. I've put two more there, but like I said, I've made plans to get rid of them. I just hadn't, I haven't healed enough to be able to get over and do it, and there's, finding help is not, I don't know how to explain that. It's just nobody wants to do nothing anymore right now.
Sure. And so you're saying that there's five people, and all those five people are there at the same time?
Ma'am?
The five people are there at the same time?
The five women are there during the week, every day.
Okay. And this is just to do paperwork?
You'd say five, that'd be six, count my truck, but I'm only there part, part of the time, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And when it was a church, were you, did you, did you own it at that time?
Yes, ma'am. I was the pastor.
And what was the, your, the size of your congregation?
We had Sundays, both services was usually anywhere between 60 and 90 people, and that parking lot was full all the way up. And then during the week, on Wednesdays and sometimes Tuesdays, we had a teaching thing. We had 30 to 40 cars most of the time during the week on those days. That's a lot of traffic, and we're not even near that doing what we're doing, so we're not, I, we're not even, we've not had a problem there ever before yet, so, you know, I don't see how we're obstructing the traffic.
So Chris, I have a question. Why would this be for commercial, like versus office institutional? Would that be, would that not be more of a use would be for office versus commercial? Or are those kind of the same category?
It's a little bit different. The office is more a medical type setup. This was more of a contractor's office, which is a permitted use in the B2 district.
So office would not be like...
It would not for this type of business.
Okay.
It's just not, not what they're doing, it's the type of business.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Just a couple of comments, so that, make sure you understand a few things, and reading some of the staff comments, that you understand that all adjoining properties around you are residential, or are too.
Yes, sir.
So that's probably why you have neighbors that...
Oh, I understand.
They're not opposed, may not be opposed to you or what you do, but the fear of what the property might and could become, and even if you have no intent, it would still be a business owning.
I mean, whatever it takes, I'd make an agreement.
Right. And I don't know that it's, that it's that easy in, Chris, I mean, I'm simply reading, you know, looking at it, to the B2 district, you know, requiring, you know, additional work to the site that you would have to do. There's various things that, if y'all went over all of this with the applicant, right? Correct.
That there would be 40-foot buffers, which in this case, where he's, where the home or where the building is, he meets those buffers as long as he doesn't get into those trees that's out there.
Is the corridor, corridor overlay?
It would apply.
And what would he have to, what would he have to do in addition?
There may be some landscaping up front and, and attempt to shield the structures back there.
Okay. And then would there be any requirements for site improvements?
There may be some improvements, including handicap accessibility and...
Okay.
And if I recall right, I believe it's, it has been in the past inspected by the fire marshal, so I believe it makes, makes those standards.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, there's additional things that if it were to be approved...
Yes, sir.
...that you probably would have to do.
Well, the fire marshal has talked to me, actually, he's the one that brought this stuff to me right after I told him I was building houses back there. That's where I heard it at the first time. And then when I came up to Chris, Chris told me the same thing. I was like, "What's going on?" I had no clue, you know, I was kind of dumb to it. I didn't realize, but the fire marshal told me what I'd have to do for ramps and things such as that. We have a handicapped child too, so we're used to that kind of thing, yes. And if I did any, excuse me, y'all. If I did any improvements, it would be move them upstairs because they're in a basement, concrete basement, which is just a better atmosphere, and I want to be able to give these women a window to look out at, you know what I'm saying? And it's to put their offices upstairs so they can just have a better working space. That's all. And the bottom stairs, bottom downstairs, there's not anything particular we would do. The guys would have a place to come and change their clothes if they wanted to and all that, which they don't have right now. You know what I'm saying? When they come in, because they're filthy from the work. Stuff like that, that's about all the bottom basement would be used for.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Brooks made the comment, your forever home, is that below the red line now on your property?
It's on the backside, the back of this property. That's eight-acre tract, 8.2 acres, I think it is. And our house is going to be right there at the back of it.
Maybe a question from staff also. How many, how many home businesses do we have in Paulding County? Home located businesses?
Anywhere between 2,500 to 3,000. Our, our number of businesses in the county, around 75% are home-based.
Maybe you need to educate people. Once again, if they build their house back here, does this not become just like one of these home-based businesses, ah, then we have 2,500 plus of them?
Well, there's, I'm just going to try and, there's three different home-type businesses. The first one is just a home occupation. Everything is done in the house that they live in. That one can be processed administratively. The other two that require the land use permit is a residential business and a rural business. This one, those limitations for those types of businesses in a residential district with what's required out of the ordinance would not cover some of what they do on numbers of vehicles and things like that. So in some aspects, they would qualify in one point to do that, but some others, they would not.
So I've got a few questions. One of them would be, not to dig into your business too much, but it seems like five office staff for six technicians sounds pretty heavy on the high, on the office side. What exactly do y'all do? Is there anything else that y'all perform service-wise to have five in the office and only six technicians?
We've got five technicians, and each one of them produce enough paperwork for federal and state personnel. And if y'all know anything about federal and, excuse me, about the state here, paperwork's that thick. So each place they go, they've got a ton of paperwork they have to do. The girls go through it and make sure they dot all the, excuse me, sorry, y'all. It's hard to keep my breath. They just go through and check everything, make sure it's proper and set up before we send it to the state and the federal government. That's what the girls are for. And then they make sure it's sent to the right spot and to the stores and facilities that we do work at.
And to go off of what James Steele had said, as far as the question for DOT, I know that this would be worked out in plan review if it was passed. I mean, could you give maybe an idea of what that would look like as far as improvements being commercial compared to residential driveway?
So in a situation like this with Hiram-Sutie Road, that's a Georgia DOT route, so any improvements that take place on the property or would impact the driveway would be required to come through plan review through DOT at Paulding County, but then also through Georgia Department of Transportation. Hiram-Sutie has about 6,000 vehicles per day right now, so it is below the threshold for any type of major improvements. They would potentially have to look at a right or left turn lane at that entrance if it had to go through Georgia DOT. Right now, currently, you know, the, the only improvements we would probably be looking at would be in the parking lot to make sure there is access for ADA accessibility to get into the property. However, you know, once that triggers and we see that and we see a change in use, we would probably recommend that something be submitted to Georgia DOT. At a minimum, you're looking at radius improvements, but potentially could look at something larger like a deceleration lane. So it just really depends, but Georgia DOT would have to permit that, that actual access to that, that business.
Thank you. I just wanted to...
Yes, sir.
Sometimes people don't understand what they're asking for.
What number, what number would be that, that tick point for the address and address improves?
It usually looks at how many applicants, how many employees you have coming in and out, or people that are going to use that property. When we looked at this originally with knowing that it was office space, we were looking at around 23 to 25 people in and out a day. Personally, I don't really see them pushing to a left turn lane, right turn lane. Really, Georgia DOT would have to decide that. If anything, you're probably looking at radius improvements out there. Um, maybe.
What is there?
Radius improvement, where you would widen it out, and then make a wider, or a bigger turn-in, turn-in and turn-out. Yes, sir. Um, but, but, yeah, just basically with those numbers, and just what they're doing, um, and the amount of traffic that would come in and out. G-Dog would have thresholds, but I think that's gonna be below the threshold for a full-blown left and right turn lane out there.
And Chris, a question you brought up, the commercial, I think that's McClung, uh, Cockburn Ridge Road, maybe? Is that right?
That's correct.
Is there a business operating out of there now?
I don't know of any business ever operating there. It was rezoned back in the nineteen-eighties.
Yeah, growing up on McClung Road there, I don't, I've never remembered it being, I remember people living there.
Yeah, I think it's always been residential use.
Thank you.
There was a store that is now, the duplexes there, Cockburn Ridge and Hiram Sooty, but I think that's the reason that that was originally, uh, converted to that, was because of that store that was, was actually there. I'm assuming they pulled the gas pumps up, but they, they was a full surface, uh, little community store there. But now it's duplexes.
Are there any other inquiries from the Board of Commissioners?
Chris, what is the proper, some classification for the church? And was the property ever rezoned before that?
Actually, the church, being in a residential district, and on a parcel that was over five acres, actually was a conforming to that residential district. In, in, in our ordinance, if you're in a residential district, to have a church, it would need five acres or greater in acreage. So, this one, being, even though it's been a long time, it's, it was in conformance.
Board of Commissioners, any further questions to the applicant? Planning Commission?
Sir, do you plan on expanding your business, having more employees out of the field?
I do, but it doesn't consist of there. We're, we're trying to do what everybody else is doing. Uh, we've, with traffic and everything that's going on in Atlanta and all that, it doesn't make sense to send people from one location any longer. So, we're setting, we're just gonna start setting up people outside of, on the other side of Atlanta, like South Georgia, and North Georgia, and over in Alabama and Tennessee, which we work all over those states. And, uh, how we're gonna be laying it out is, they'll be doing the work there, and they'll do an in-home office, and we'll have a lady working for them, or somebody working for them, doing their paperwork. And all they'll do is send the paperwork to us for a final check from that location, and then we send it into the federal government and the state.
What's your timeframe on that transition?
Oh, that's just a future plan. I don't even know if it's gonna happen, to be honest with you. It's just, that's all I foresee in the future, as far as that goes. We have been, I've been in this business since nineteen seventy-two, uh, seventy-nine, and I've grown no more than I have now, so. I mean, I'm happy with where I'm at, it's, 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 with my age, I'm, I'm, I'm right at sixty, so, we're getting ready to retire. My son may run it, but he'll have to deal things under the same stipulations as whatever we can decide with y'all. But, as far as the future goes, uh, we will not relinquish control, but there will be something wrote up if, even if, even if, uh, he don't like it. There'll be something written up where to have to stay the same way, no matter how long the business stays there. He may decide to move it out somewhere else instead of having it there. I don't know. I mean, that's the only far-future thing I can think of.
Any further questions to the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Again, there are four minutes remaining of this time, so at this time, I generally ask if there's anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application. Hearing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would, please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Reed Ben Skoder. Uh, my wife and I live next door. We've had this property since nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, I sent a letter in the other day, or yesterday, but, uh, so I probably will just read this if it's easier for you. But, basically, to start off with, before I do that, I just wanted to comment, I, I, if we're gonna be neighbors, I don't have to, I don't like to be in a situation where we're gonna be confrontational. I hope we can be good neighbors at some point, but we do have some problems. And, one of the things in, to clarify, we on this board, and I don't know if I can point it out here or not, but our property is right next to that, where that red line is, all that house there, to the left of it. Um, and that picture there, I don't know what it's taking, but there, then, what he's talking, there's a lot more vehicles than he's talking about. There's eight to ten, or twelve work trucks, vans, ambulances there, parked from the road all the way back, and more all the time. And I don't know why this, that aerial view doesn't show it, but, of course, it's probably been taken before he built, uh, another shed or a barn right behind that, uh, white structure, his office. And, um, I'll get into that, it was a lot of noise in that construction, but, basically, that whole area, and I don't know why, it's, um, where, where he built that, right next to our house, there is a big storage pod he brought in, uh, like a tractor-trailer pod up on blocks. Um, it's got industrial gases in it, I don't know what kind, green canisters. I understand, maybe nitrogen. But, and there's just, um, he's got a couple, he's got two, uh, big, long trailers, he's got about four or five other trailers back in there. There's pipe piled up, junk appliances, I mean, it's just, an eyesore dust. And six months out of the year, when the leaves come off, you know, we're just sitting there looking at it. But anyway, as far, and one other thing, correction, and I'm not saying he's not truthful on this, but, when he had the church, we were there when the first church was there, the Seventh Day Baptist Church, they were pretty small, eight or ten people. I never saw a lot of change. I mean, basically, I would say ten or twelve, at the most, people coming in, twelve. Uh, he, he did have a, tried to have a ministry and stuff, I had no problem with it, didn't have a problem with the other church. But, the business part of it, I do. Yeah, and I, I really do. And, it's a lot more, I don't know, like I said, if, if we had an aerial shot of what it is like now, it's, there's junk everywhere. I mean, like I said, trailers, tractors, he's got a rollback wrecker, uh, he's got an old dump truck, um, front-end loader, tractor, it's just pretty unsightly. But anyway, I'll just go ahead and read this if it's all right. Wish you, um, if I can read it all right. Basically, we're very much opposed to, to the rezoning of it. Uh, we've lived on that property, uh, eighteen fifty-eight Hiram Sooty Road, since, uh, twelve thirty-one of eighty-seven. We purchased it, we basically, I've always lived in the country, trying to get out with this wildlife, and we just like privacy and so forth. Uh, the, having that business next door to us is, it's been disruptive, problematic, and so forth, and I just wanna do, I guess, a summary of it, um, that the noise is a problem. Uh, it seems like it's constant, we got, uh, trucks coming in, and not all the time, all day long, but trucks coming in, their backup alarms, uh, going, like the delivery truck on the gas truck, trucks and tractors, uh, front-end loader, banging of pipes, uh, being loaded and unloaded. When that barn was being constructed there, last year or two, uh, it was just, they were riveting, and the stuff is all metal building, just, you couldn't even, we couldn't even hardly talk out next door, our pool and, and the stuff out there, deck out there, we can hardly talk with each other without, you know, hear each other. Um, then they came in and, and brought in, um, I guess he put in some kind of foam insulation, and the truck was out there just, rrrr, all day long for a week or two, came back and did some more. Um, so, I, it's just, um, a lot of noise, um, we couldn't even talk to ourselves, you know, talk to each other out there a lot of times when any of this is going on. But, but normally, it's overall, you know, vehicles coming in and out, uh, and not, like I said, I know he doesn't have all of the guys he used to have coming in daily, but there, he's got at least ten or twelve vans, trailers, all kinds of stuff out there. Um, and on, I know on A two, we wrote it down, because, uh, he was, uh, they cranked up with that big, uh, red dump truck, and let it run for about an hour. And, I mean, it was, you know, as we're talking forty feet from our house, and just running, and, and, and he would gun it and stuff, and it'd just run, and then the exhaust and so forth. We actually ended up going inside, 'cause it was giving us a headache from the noise. Um, and basically, overall, it's the, uh, eyesore, which I mentioned about, just a visible thing. And we're, he's got, like I said, that storage pod, he's got a, it's about twenty, thirty feet from our property, it's up on blocks, and he's got some other fuel tanks there and junk around it. Uh, there's pipes, s, s, piled up, aluminum, big four-inch aluminum pipes, I guess it gets off the job sites, um, about this high. When they're clanging around, they bring them in and, and drop them off, again, about thirty or forty feet from our property line, or, or fifty feet from our house or so. Um, and then, um, the industrial gases are probably one of the main concerns we have too. I know, uh, we took note of it, back on the twenty-seventh of July, uh, a truck came in, next air gas, and it had a placard on it, um, hazmat placard. So, I, like I said, I don't, had to ask him what it was, but there were green tanks, they, the guy backed up, going, we paid attention because the alarm on this truck coming in backing in, and started watching him, and actually took pictures and photos. But, he, he unloaded at least probably a dozen tanks, and then loaded them back out of this container. So, this, this container is probably, I don't know why it doesn't show up on that picture there, along with a lot of other stuff. But, um, you know, it's something we have to look at, especially when the leaves are off the trees. And, uh, it's a little concerning that I don't, I have no idea what kind of gases in there. I'm not talking petroleum, but this is industrial type welding type tank gases. Um, and, okay, and the vehicles, I go over this, the vehicles and the junk that are there. Um, I know there's just one, this is forty or fifty feet from our house. Um, it's, when the leaves are off, we have to look at, uh, all the time, um, in addition to the barn. Uh, rollback wrecker, the dump truck, uh, there's two long-neck trailers that you'd haul, like bulldozers and stuff on, parked right there. Um, farm tractor, front-end loader, and there's, I know lately, I've just seen it, it's got four, five, or six, um, box trailers. I don't know what four, but, you know, uh, different sizes. Basically, overall, I, these are not something that you're gonna see in a residential area. I mean, I might have some, I have my lawn tractor and things like that, but not having, you know, twenty vehicles out there, or all these other things, the big, long trailers and stuff stored there. Um, light pollution is a little bit of it, it's annoying to some degree, because he's at a business, and I know, realize there's security concerns, he's got, he's got a, a business there, but there, the lights, it just changed our atmosphere, it changed, it's light up the whole area there, and, um, kinda pointed our way, so it's taking away some of our privacy and, at night. Um, now, the main thing, one of the main things that we're concerned about, um, in addition to some of those things there, is the loss of our property value. Um, any business located next door to our residence, or any residence, is gonna affect our value, regardless of the type of business it is. And, I don't know what their intent is for operating, or how big they're gonna get, or anything else, but I know just right now, it's, uh, it's been a problem for us. We refinanced, uh, to get a better rate back early this year, and I've dealt with this guy, he's a finance person, that is very experienced, and he did a lot of research on it. And, and when they finally did, he set up the appraisal, and when he did it, it came in way lower than he thought. And he's the expert, I mean, I'm just, I just, what I thought, and I read around and stuff, what other houses are selling for. And he looked on Zillow and some of the other things, and he just said, he was really, really surprised that it came in so low. And so, I, I started to get re-appraised, and, uh, he said, "Well, we already closed now, let's do this." And it came out that, he checked, and he said that the person indicated probably, that they did knock off something, maybe as much as a hundred thousand dollars off our appraisal, because of the property, they could tell there was a business there. And, not just the business, I mean, if it was just there without all the junk, you know, it's maybe something different, but it, it is visible, uh, eyesore junk and, uh, the noise. I mean, when somebody's on there, there's, it's not all the time, but it's definitely not something you're gonna have in your normal neighborhood, or, or.
Mr. Ben Skoder, just point of reference I wanna make, you've occupied about ten minutes of the fifteen minutes that's allowed for opposition. I don't know if anybody else is wishing to speak. If so, you might wanna make an allowance for them.
Okay, let's do it.
If you wanna wrap up, and then I'll move on.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Basically, I just, I'm afraid too, that the business, any kind of, he opens this up, it's, you start doing it, it could be a car lot next year. I mean, it, his heirs or anybody else, he could sell it, and all those stipulations don't mean a lot, 'cause they're gonna, it, I know, I've just from experience, it can change, I've seen it happen. So, that's another of our concerns, but.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to me.
My name is, uh, Thomas Akin. I've been on Hiram's. I've been on Hiram Sooty Road since I came home from Vietnam. The traffic has gotten tremendous on this highway. There's evenings that the traffic is backed up from Davis Mill Crossroads, past Cockburn Ridge Church. We've already had a death at Cockburn Ridge Church Road, in Hiram Sooty. We've had a death up at the other crossroads, which is Sooty Way and Old Sooty Road, where this is being proposed at. You have to come out on the side of a hill. We got tractor and trailers coming down that road now, that's a state highway, running eighty mile an hour. Is the county ready to handle a hazmat spill? The other thing is, we don't know what chemicals are down in the hole, who's monitoring it. And to me, it just seems like it's not a place for a, it's a residential area. It's not a place for a, uh, business with, um, with trucks that's gonna pull out into a road that truly now needs to be widened. It needs it, he's, he's gonna have to have a curb cut. If you slow down coming over a hill, and a truck comes in behind him, or a car, it's gonna be hard for them to stop. And the, uh, oh, and I say, without knowing what's down there, it, like me, you need something out of EPA to say, how you gonna control those chemicals, or the hazmat material. So, uh, I'm just saying, the road is very dangerous now. We do not need to make it any more dangerous, unless we can widen it. And that's my input on it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on, in opposition, or questions, comments, or concerns? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. You have about three minutes remaining.
Hi, my name is Donna McKinney. I live, um, right in front of this part, uh, right on Hiram Sooty one nine one six, and I live right next to the driveway. And, we get a lot of traffic on that driveway. There's cars in and out of that driveway all day long. Um, the noise, the light, it's very, very distracting. Um, the thought of having even more business coming in and out of there, just, I, I've only been in here for a year, and I had no idea that there was a business there when I moved in. And, I really, I'm, I'm very much against it, just because of the amount of traffic and the light at night that comes into my house. I mean, he cut down a lot of those trees that are on his land, that come up next to my house, so there's even less of a barrier there. So, that's just all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? There's about a minute remaining. And again, this would be in opposition, or questions, comments, and concerns. Hearing none. This time, I will, um, allow the applicant, if he would like to come back forward, he has about four minutes remaining of his time. Again, any questions from the planning commission or the board of commissioners, to any party that's been involved in the discussion? discussion today, not count against that side's time. So, Mr. Brooks, one of the things that popped up consistently with those that wished to speak was mostly related, traffic is ubiquitous among them because you're dealing with a state highway and the traffic that's there. We've already heard from our assistant director of the DOT for Paulding County of what the ADT count on that roadway is. But noise particularly and lights, in addition to the amount of traffic coming out of that driveway on a daily basis, and the junk vehicles, as it's been described to us, that are located on the property. So, if you would like to address that, that would be the points of rebuttal.
Okay.
And then, of course, if you have anything to add, you can do so now. And then, we'll move forward with any questions.
So, do the rebuttal now, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The five ambulances, they're going to be gone, okay? That takes five vehicles away. They've been there for three years, almost, four of them have. Two, three of them haven't. I just brought two in last year, something like that, the last two, because we quit using them. The trucks out back, I'm moving from my house at Twenty-Nine Dollar Street, and there's a white international pickup truck with a truck, with a trailer to the back of it. That's what I carry my farm tractor on and my skid steer on. When I go do stuff for people, I do some bush hogging every once in a while. Of course, I hadn't been able to do it for a while. And like I say, it's been two months since I've even messed with that stuff until recently. I had somebody go down and crank them because the batteries dead. Two months ago, I cranked that dump truck and it hadn't been cranked up in a year because the lift parts went down on it. And that's personal stuff. It's not business-related. I understand there, I understand what he's talking about because that stuff wasn't there, now it is, okay?
Do they have valid license plates on them?
The dump truck don't because it's, I can't use it at the moment because of the broke lifts on it. And that's, like I said, that's just, I brought it over there to my garage. I built the garage and all that noise went on while I was building the garage. That's done, except for they've got a, I'm still putting plywood up in it. And that's not business, that's personal. It's not, has nothing to do with business.
Well, the point is, you're allowed, what is it, marshal, two vehicles in the county without valid license plates? Is it-
Two that have to be stored inside of a structure and be out.
So, you know, if you've got more than that, they're not legal. If they've got valid license plates on them, then, you know, it's a different issue.
Right. I've only got-
The dump truck's still got its license, a tag, or did you buy one?
I didn't buy one in April, because it's not-
Okay. I just, one of the trucks I just brought over there and I didn't do, I didn't update it after I moved it over. It's only been over about two and a half months now. The longer trailer and white, white trucky hooks to it. I'm getting rid of one of the trailers because I had it. And now that I moved my personal stuff over here, I was going to get rid of that trailer. Then I've got a dump trailer that's made to move stuff like trash, trees, junk like that. And that's all that's ever been used for, it's going to be used for. And it's a dump trailer that you put just junk on. I tore an old building that was an eyesore up, out, and put a car trailer there, which I had my wood shop in at my other house. Like I said, I got COVID and I just have got it moved over before I got COVID. And inside of it's old wood shop that I had from my other house. That's what I had that trailer for. I'm moving, so all that stuff's going to be, it's going to take a little bit to get rid of this stuff. But that's all that is, all that stuff's personal. It's not on the business part. It's on, it's on personal part of property. As far as the container, there's nitrogen in there, which is not dangerous. They use it in your tires. You got tires with seventy, eighty pounds on them to a hundred and twenty pounds on the trucks. They run down the road with them. It's just nitrogen. There's not a dangerous gas in there whatsoever. If you want to, you can come look. The trailer was there when we first bought the place. We moved it in for the church. There is no church. The trailer was there, so I used it for that, so nobody would mess with it. I just lock it up. And it's only there for if the guys need some nitrogen. The aluminum tubes, all those are aluminum tubes. They go down the gas tanks. And when they're too short or not working proper, you take them out. Aluminum is high in money. We use that for the Christmas money for everybody's yearly Christmas party. That's what we do with aluminum tubes.
You recycle them, in other words?
We do.
Okay.
Recycle. It's all aluminum, full aluminum. And I understand that it's loud. I can do something about all that. The noise for building and all that's been way down. As far as cars going in and out all the time, that's usually me. The girls are going out to lunch or doing whatever they do. But the guys don't come in and out. And if a truck comes in, it's usually UPS. Or once a month, we have nitrogen brought in, which is the truck he was talking about with the placard on it. Because that truck carries, carries all kinds of different gases, not just nitrogen when he's delivering. But that's not our truck, okay? When you have nitrogen on the back of your truck, you don't have to have a placard. That's the point of, it's not a dangerous gas.
Not flammable.
It's not flammable. As far as junk around the trailer, I've cleaned up a lot of stuff. Right now, my trailer is full of it because I came down with COVID and couldn't move some of it out. And I got a trailer full, but it's under a cover and there's nothing I can do about that because I have to move it. And like I said, I just now got out from the sickness of COVID, so. As far as cutting trees down, she herself had to cut two trees, big, huge pine trees down. We cut a lot of dead ones down and some that was full of black ants. We had black ants, which we cut down some for our neighbor here too, because we had black ants go rampant and kill a lot of our trees. Those were getting dangerous. They were going to start falling on things and hurting things. Some of them were aiming towards her house, so we had to take them down. She knows that. As far, what else did I miss?
The lights were there as part of the church.
The lights.
Yeah, the lights were there when the church was-
You know, we can take some of them down. They were there when the church was there so we could keep an eye on the kids when they were out in the yard. And then, we just never took them down. But if that's an issue, we can have Greystone come take them down. Our security cameras have a light that will come on with motion. It won't be that bright. So, if that's an issue, we can deal with that.
And just so you know, I offered several months back to put up a privacy fence if it was bothering them. They said it wasn't bothering them, so. And I understand all of this is because they don't want it commercial. I really understand that. I don't want it to become commercial either. Our reason I bought all this property back behind it is to make it my lifelong home. I don't want it growing into a subdivision, which I beat out several people trying to buy it to make it a subdivision. Imagine what you'd have had there if it turned into a subdivision before. You understand what I'm saying?
We did. We, we kind of blended the rebuttal along with questions from planning commissioners. So, if there's any, if you want to summarize, if you have anything new you want to add before I ask a commission, if they want to ask questions, you can do so now.
I just want to let my neighbors know. I've been, I'm a pastor. I try to do things right. I'm not perfect. Nobody's perfect. It wasn't that long ago I asked if these things bothered, you know, him. I knew it bothered one of them, but I ain't going to get into that. But the thing is, is that I would do whatever it takes to make their homes happy too. I don't want to live in a junk place. I don't want to pile it all up. I have a place that I own. I got, had stuff here and there. And I'm moving my stuff to get ready to do my forever home in the back to stay there. And so, I've got to put it where I've got a place in order to get rid of it. And I will be getting rid of it soon. I just, I've had two months here, I haven't been able to do a thing.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the planning commission to the applicant?
You mentioned that you moved your personal stuff over to this lot.
It's over to the lot behind the business lot.
Right. And that's right next door to Mr., excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Ben Shulter. It's right next to his property where he can see it, hear everything that's going on. I don't know myself personally, if I lived there, I wouldn't be very happy with all the piping, the old trucks.
I understand it.
Everything that's there. And you built a new shed.
I built a barn.
A barn?
For personal use, yes.
Okay, great.
And I got a tractor and a skid steer. And I've got a pasture down here that goes up towards McClung. And I'm going to be using that pasture. I got a garden I wanted to keep, you know, all this stuff. So, I did the barn mostly just for my own personal
All right. Ms. Silver?
Yes, I have a few questions. Chris, first, the first question goes to you. With all the items that have been discussed that are on the property, so let's say the property is denied, they don't, they can't move forward to the commercial zoning, does that mean that he can still keep the items on the property, that they just cannot conduct a business out of that structure?
Regarding several of the items that were brought up, like the container, storage pod, possibly junk and things like that, that would be, had to be dealt with through the marshal's office in coordination with planning and zoning.
But that has nothing to do with zoning, the items that are on the property?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, if this, if it were denied, he could still keep those items on the property unless the marshal came in and said, hey, we're going to need you to move this or move that?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the zoning doesn't make a difference with the eyesore and everything like that? It could still be turned down for zoning, but the eyesore could still be there?
That's correct.
Okay. Number two is, is there any chemicals on the property? There's no chemicals, just-
No, there's a gas tank. It's a plastic tank that we had gas when they were running out of gas. And I don't know, there's about that much mostly water in it, which I, before I got sick, like I said, we've got a guy that comes around and he pumps out water in the tanks. And legal to do so. And I, until Carol mentioned it to me on the way up here, I forgot that that tank was sent back there. It's on my personal property, but it was used for business trucks because, excuse me, there was no way to get gas in a lot of the stations. They were closing down. And we still had to go and keep facilities open.
So, you're fine with number four with liquid petroleum, or maybe that could be changed to chemicals in general, right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't keep chemicals anyways because that's what I'm against. I try to keep the groundwater clean. That's what our testing does. And the land, we know all those laws. We try to keep all that stuff clean. So, we don't want to hurt our land. We don't want to hurt, there's a branch back there. We don't want to hurt any of that. We want to keep our environment the same way it is. There's a lake right behind my house that belongs to a neighbor. I certainly don't want to hurt that. I like my neighbor, okay? I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, our new neighbor. But I don't know her very much, but I don't want to cause them any problems. I want to do what's right for them.
Okay, so let me, I mean, interrupt you. I just want to move on with some of the other questions real quickly that I may have. So, with regards to the lights, like your neighbor said that she moved in a year ago and was not aware, you know, like, you know, when you purchase a home, you have a due diligence period where you look at your neighbors, you look to see if there's any, you know, anything, you know, any sex offenders, all the, as a real estate agent, I understand that, right? But you're saying that, that those lights have been up since it was the church, so that you didn't just put those up within the last year or anything?
You can look at the date at Greystone, you'll see that we're up there.
It's 2010.
Oh, okay, mm, okay. I think that's-
I think because we cut some of the dead trees and stuff out of the way, that's probably what the problem is.
Okay. And one last question. The noise that your, that your neighbor was saying that, you know, there was a lot of noise, was that during a construction period? Or was that, is that always? Or is, was that, just like, I know when I moved in, I didn't have neighbors next to me. They built a house on either side of me during that time of construction. There was a lot of noise. So, is this during a time period of something being built? Or does the business itself cause that type of noise all the time?
No. The, it was while the buildings, he mentioned the phone being sprayed in there. That was insulation inside the barn. And then, it was a two, actually a three-coat system. And I didn't, I didn't even let them come back and do the third coat because they were making a mess. So, I just gave that up. So, anyways, yes, that was a lot of noise because during the day, the pump was running. But it's not at night, you know, nothing goes on over there at night at all. We're, we're usually gone from there four, four-thirty, maybe sometimes at five. But most of the time, it's four, we knock off and we're out of there. I'm partially retired and I'm only an advisor to the business right now. So, basically, I built the barn for me. So, I had a place to do my tinkering and stuff like that. You know, I still need something to do with my time, so.
Any further questions from the planning commission?
What quantity of nitrogen do you store on the property?
Like you said, twelve bottles.
Twelve bottles, okay. You're right, nitrogen's not flammable. But the only thing it does as far as hazardous is to place oxygen in this only if you're in an enclosed environment.
And that's why I lock it up to keep-
You're right, it's not hazardous.
As long as I don't let anybody get around it, I mean, and then they have to do some serious damage to get into those bottles, you know?
Any further questions? Board of Commissioners?
I have two questions. One, the staff-
Could you talk into the mic? I can't hear you.
So, Chris, so a typical commercial property would go through a plan review, would you have tins of pines and all that kind of stuff? Something such as this right here being a big zone, what has to be done? Or plan reviews, trying to get that covered with the Irish red?
There will have to be a plan review process to look at a site where all the departments take a look at it. And as Erica mentioned, G-dot approval on any changes that's necessary for the access. We would need to look at it and make sure, I know some trees have been removed out there, that the buffers are put back if, if they need to be, and that they're meeting the development standards and ordinances.
Most of the changes require attention for that.
It's very possible if this, some of those standards.
Because, you know, I'm, I'm for business on their own, but not in order to be much to have, you know, that's why you have business parks, indoor kilometers, plant, they-
I agree.
So, and that's why I'm looking at that piece of property, you know, to see if we spend time, or they spend time with an engineer, just to see if, see if possible, get, to make the requirements for a plan review. And also, another thing I was just looking, also, we just have a water department, maybe make sure that he understands number six.
Are there any other questions from the board of commissioners, comments? And would you all check that mic, see if it's got a, if it's on?
Can you hear me now? You want me to start over?
Yeah, could you repeat that?
Did you hear me, Chris?
I heard, I think, most everything and-
Plan review, everything be looked at if it goes forward.
Right, that's correct, that's correct.
And Lori, as far as explaining number six, has he been, has that been explained to him so that he understands what number six is required?
The item six is to, is a reminder that the property is in a mandatory sewer basin. And that would be something that may require sewer, if it's available. But that would be something he would have to work through during that review process with the water system.
That provision would be triggered with new construction, not with any of the existing, existing activity on the site. We just always like to make people aware of the requirements of the, of the sweetwater basin. And it's a mandatory connection to sewer for new, new commercial construction on the property.
Thank you. Ms. Silver, you got another question?
Yes, one more question, sir. If, would you be amicable to allowing just the business to be run out of there with the staff of the office and no vehicles? If, would you be amicable to allowing just the business to be run out of there with the staff of the office and no vehicles?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. If I had to have provisions like that, I'll do that.
So in other words, just having staff come in there, work out of the, the facility, doing the paperwork, and that, that's all you would do?
The guys, all they do is come in and pick up their paperwork, so usually on Fridays, maybe sometimes Mondays.
They turn in their checks and paperwork on Fridays and get their paperwork for the next week.
Yeah, that's what they do. They don't, they don't do work there. They just drive in and then stay about 45 minutes to an hour at the most, or usually they're gone. And that's once a week.
All right, thank you.
All right, that, thank you very much. At this time, giving all the discussion that we've had concerning application 2021-16-Z, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we deny the application.
I have a motion to deny by Mr. Henson.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes four, two, and one. And I would advise you to get with Mr. Robinson after the meeting to discuss what options you may have. Right. Yeah, the final decision on this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their, their action at seven o'clock tonight. Mr. Robinson, if you would introduce the next application?
Okay, next application, 2021-23Z, application by Molly Agar, requesting to rezon 6.38 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to A1 Agricultural, with plans to utilize the property for boarding horses and additional agricultural purposes. Property is located in Land Lot 557, District 2, Section 3. The address of the property is 13, 313 McCready Drive, it's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with two stipulations. And we've had no noted opposition to this application and applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Molly Agar and I purchased 313 McCready Drive December 31st of this last year. And I would like to, I have my own personal horses. The property was already a horse property when I purchased it. The barn and fencing was all pre-existing. I would like to board a few horses there along with my own. And it makes more sense for the usage to be zoned as agricultural so that I don't have to, every two years, continue to renew for special use application. It won't change anything about the way that the property is currently being used.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? I would ask just to ensure the applicant has read and understands the two recommended stipulations from staff and you're agreeable to those?
Yes, sir, no problem.
Planning commission, none. Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Is this, we've got several applications for agriculture. Is this the one you're gonna take? Creating this wasteland?
No, that's, I think, a different one, actually. I'm more interested in, in taking on a few borders for hoof rehab and horses that have metabolic issues. I'm specifically geared more toward horse welfare than any particular discipline or, or breed. In fact, I've set up on the property for my own horses. It's called a track system. Aside from all the benefits to the horses, it's a very sustainable method of keeping horses. And that essentially, most horse properties have a, a dry lot or a sacrificial pasture. Mine is the 12 feet around the perimeter of the pastures where I keep the horses, and then I can let them out to graze. And I give them all analyzed and tested hay, so I can completely control their, their diets. So that way, their horses that typically aren't allowed to be out 24/7 because they are not able to handle the grass, are able to be out and have a normal natural life on my track, because I'm, I'm able to control the amount of grass they're getting.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Agar. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, my name is Ellen Nguyen, and our property joins Ms. Agar's property. And I really tried to find you before this hearing.
If you'd please direct your conversation to me, please.
I'm sorry. I tried to find her to, to ask some questions and concern, so I'll ask those here. With that, you don't see it on this draft, but we have a five-acre lake to the right of that property there. And our concern would be drainage from the horse lots into our lake. That is a stocked lake with fish. We swim in the lake. We have a farm ourselves. We're not opposed to horses and cattle. It's been a, a working farm all my life. We just want to understand the number, the head of horses, number head that would be on the property. Six acres is not a lot of property for a lot of horses. If it were more than six head of horses, we would probably be opposed to it because of the amount of mud that would be tracked on that track that goes around. I went up there on the golf cart this afternoon and looked at the property. And once we get into a rainy season, that is going to be a very muddy track. So my question would be, what's in place to control silt that would possibly run off of that property and not damage ours there with the lake coming, coming right below that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. If Ms. Agar would like to please come back to the lectern. And just as a matter of brief explanation, we do it this way because sometimes when you allow direct discussions between participants in the audience, it can generate a bit of conflict, and anybody who wants to can be mad at me. So that's why I have everybody please talk to me. Ms. Agar, she raises some concerns about the number of horses that might be boarded there. Obviously, she has some concerns with her neighboring property and, and the quality, maintaining the quality of the property and the lake that is on it, so.
Absolutely.
How would you like to address?
Absolutely valid concerns. And again, I'm, I'm very interested in the sustainability of, of the land and the quality and value of life to the, the horses on the property. I can't see having more than six out there, you know, just from a, again, a welfare standpoint. I, I take care of everyone like they're my own, and, and I wouldn't want to get in a situation where, you know, I'm not, this isn't something I'm planning to become fabulously wealthy on. If I can, you know, cover the expense of my own, that would be fantastic. As far as dealing with mud, I'm constantly doing mud control. In fact, on Monday, I had a geotextile grid that they use for construction to, to control runoff delivered to the house. That will take care of 100 feet. I'm, I'm going around constantly and addressing areas because I do wear the track down, and, and that's the whole purpose. Again, instead of having a, a large paddock that's all mud, you know, I'm, I'm keeping the dirt lot around the perimeter. And I don't want it to be slick, and I don't want it to be dangerous for the, the animals, so I'm, I'm constantly addressing that. As far as the runoff, the topography of the land is such that we actually would have to go up and then down to get to the lake. So I don't, I don't see any of that being a particular issue. I know there's a creek toward the bottom of the property, but none of the track system is where it would even be anywhere near running into the creek. I'm not sure if that's on exactly whose property that falls on. It's not on my own, but it wouldn't affect that.
How many horses do you personally own?
I have two.
You have two?
Yes, sir.
Would you be willing to limit to the number of horses to five, maybe, to the property?
I would love to. I think six is kind of a magic number. That would be my preference. But if it were a matter of approval or not, then certainly, you know, obviously, I would agree to that.
How many stalls do you have?
It's a four-stall barn. I don't really bring them in. That's, again, part of the welfare thing. They're pretty unhappy inside. But I have them because I think it's good if you have a horse that needs stall rest or has some reason that they have to come in. I have the option to do it.
And your intent letter said you had six, and then you didn't want to exceed eight horses.
So I, I actually did originally have six stalls in there, but I've since converted one to a storage area and one to a tack room. I could reconvert that, but, yeah. And, and again, just kind of going through the process, you know, again, developing what I have over the last, you know, few months, six would be the ideal for me.
You would be willing to stipulate a limit of six horses?
Absolutely, yeah, no problem.
Would you be willing to stipulate putting up a silt fence between your property and Ms. Nguyen's property? So there would be no drainage or runoff?
I could certainly do that. It would, may not be the most attractive, but I, you know, if that's what makes everybody happy, that's not a problem for me.
What if we looked at it a different way? And if you and your neighbor coordinate, and if there is any problem, you take care of it.
Sure.
Because silt fences, yeah, silt fences is gonna.
I think, I have a feeling we'd probably be fine with that.
Silt fences is gonna deteriorate.
Sure, over time, and they're, they're pretty ugly, but.
Yeah, there's other ways to do it. You can do trenches, you can do different.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm open to all that.
Well, there are also environmental rules in play that the county would act upon if it ever became an issue of discharges to other properties. So from a safeguard to neighboring properties, you have that to fall back on as well. Again, as Mr. Steele pointed out, it would be much preferable if neighbors would actually talk to one another and try to work together.
Again, going back to that, if you had, say, we had very bad weather, what, if you've only got four stalls, what would you do with the two additional horses?
So I, I also have some run-in shelters, and, I mean, there are horse farms that do not have barns, that their horses are out 24/7, and all they have are run-in shelters. So, yeah, I think it's important that, that, in fact, some have none run-in shelters, no run-in shelters. But, yeah, I do provide options for them to come in, but, you know, in fact, in one of my own, it would be, he gets very upset if he is confined to a stall. It's not a natural thing. And unless a horse has been brought up to be confined, they, it's, it's an upsetting, distressful situation. So, you know, I would reserve stalls for if boarders wanted them first. And again, I've got the run-in sheds. I also have the option that if, if it were extremely muddy, I can certainly, I've got three pastures that they can go in and get off of the track to let it dry out, so.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
What did trigger the, I think you said earlier, what triggered you to go A1?
If I were to get a special land use, I have to renew it every few years, and the, it's not cost effective. Again, this isn't really a money-making thing for me. It's kind of a break even, so it wouldn't be cost-effective for me to have to continue doing that.
Right, and, I mean, what, is it because of the amount of horses, Chris, that triggers this, or what is it?
Actually, actually, the ordinance does not regulate the number of horses on, on a property. You can have horses in a residential district outright if you meet the standards where you actually have a, a stall or barn that's required, and that has to be 200 feet from rear and side property lines and 300 feet from the front property line. That can't happen with that issue, with this residential zoning. The special use permit would also maintain some higher setbacks if she went that route. Agricultural allows for the reduced setbacks and the opportunity to do the, the horse boarding.
Okay, so mostly the horse boarding part of it.
But it does not specify a number of horses, I guess.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Agar.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion. And again, we have an added potential stipulation of the limitation to the number of horses to six. There was also mention of silt fence by Mr. Henson. So if anybody wants to make a motion and wants to entertain any of those modifications or added steps, please do so at this time.
Could we ask Ms. Nguyen to come back up for just a moment, please? Are you satisfied with getting with the owner and working out the, if not potential conflict with the water running off?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or would you prefer the silt fence?
Now, I, I would absolutely much prefer to work with her. I love having good relationships with neighbors. And as I said, I tried to reach out to her before today. I drove up to her driveway and the gate was up. So I turned around and went around and drove up on the golf cart to look at the property. But I do have one more question on the rezoning. Would this be specific to horses only, or could this continue on and be a pig farm or something of that nature later on?
One of the stipulations, number two, that would be applied to it, says owner, applicant agrees to no swine, pigs located on the property.
Okay, perfect.
And the first one eliminates any canine. No dogs.
Okay.
As a boarding business.
Okay, yeah, which is very noisy. All right, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve with the added stipulation, number three, of a limit of number of six horses.
Second?
I have a motion to approve with the two listed stipulations, with a third added to limit the number of horses to six by Mr. Leggett. I have a second on that motion by Mr. Henson. At this time, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The applicant must be present for it to be considered. Sure, let's, 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 I don't think we have to vote on that. We'll just take a short recess, five minutes. Welcome back to Part Two. Mr. Robinson, if you would, please.
Okay. 2021-24Z, application by Kelly Henry requesting to rezon 6.2 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to A1 Agricultural for a small family farm agricultural purposes and to continue their son's home education. Property is located in Land Lot 324, District 1, Section 3. The property address is 1162 Ridge Road, St. Commission Post 2. Staff is recommended approval to one stipulation. We've had no opposition noted, and the applicants are present, raised present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hi, my name is, who am I talking to?
I'm the chair.
I'm talking to you, all right, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak today. I apologize, sitting back there, I couldn't see who was talking up here. I'm Kelly Henry, this is my son Caleb, my husband Brian, and my dad Gary Maynor. We purchased the property eight years ago with the intent of having a little small family homestead and being able to homeschool our son and just be able to have some goats and some chickens and some little pigs. The previous owners did have the goats on the property, and I believe they had some chickens. Our next-door neighbor had goat, excuse me, had horses, so we did not realize that our property was not quite large enough with, to have the proper setbacks. Understand that we can have the goats and chickens on the property if we did have the proper setbacks. We were, we're a big scout family, so we were out of town back in July, come to found out our dog and a couple of our pigs got off the property while we were gone. We were contacted, my husband came back and got the animals put back up. We've been working really hard on reinforcing our fences, we're putting up cattle panels to make sure no one gets out. Yeah, all we're really interested in is having some chickens and some goats to have milk, and some pigs to have some sausage. We don't want any conflict with neighbors, anything like that. I would really love it if anybody would talk to us and express any concerns, so we could take care of it. I mean, I don't know, are there any questions, or?
We'll get to that.
I'm gonna be short and sweet here, I didn't, you know...
All right, all right. Are there any questions to the, well, you are familiar with the stipulation stating that you would not engage in any business related to canines, dogs?
Absolutely, I don't want any such thing.
And are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
So you currently have pigs?
We got some little pot bellies. We did have some larger pigs, but those have been disposed of or gotten rid of.
Can I ask?
With no intent of bringing in any larger pigs.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Robinson? Can you explain the difference to us as a board, why the last application had no swine as a stipulation, and this one doesn't? As an A2 zoning, downzone.
I'll be straight. When applicants come in, that is some of the things we discuss, and I knew that this applicant had a couple of pigs, and that was one reason this didn't go on there, 'cause I knew they were gonna come and ask for that, and I thought that was, needed to be opened in the public. I knew that the other did not have pigs.
Currently, you live on the property?
Yes, sir.
And you have any stables, any barns?
We do have a barn on the property.
Does all that meet the current, would that meet the zoning setbacks for A1?
Yes.
Because this is a very narrow piece of property.
Actually, it is narrow.
Actually, they would meet the zoning setback for the structure out there with the A1 district.
Okay.
Well, and you're looking at two properties blended together as a part of this entire rezoning, correct?
It's actually the only, it's the property that's got the A1 pending. The tract to the south is already zoned agricultural, and it's a different ownership.
Okay.
How many total acres do you live on?
6.2.
So you're wanting to rezone all of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Mr. Ellis?
So you have pot-bellied pigs. I mean, how many do you have, and, I mean, what's your intention going forward? How many you tend to keep?
Right now, we do have four pot bellies. We have determined that there was another pot-bellied pig running around wreaking havoc. We do not know who he belongs to. He was not ours. We do have him corralled, and he will be sausage. I'm just being honest, guys. And Chris told me that was all right, 'cause he's considered a pet.
But if they mean little suckers?
Oh, they are mean little suckers, yeah. We do have one, I mean, if it needs to be a stipulation that we don't have pot-bellied pig or have pigs, the only thing our request is that we are allowed to have one that is a pet. You know, I...
Would you agree with the stipulation of not killing?
With not, with not killing the wild pig? Would that make you happy? If that's what we need to do, we can go that route too, and I will find a home for him.
So what other animals do you have on the property, and going forward, what kind of, what kind of plan do you have to, what kind of animals do you plan to have there?
We plan to have goats. We're raising them for dairy purposes. We have chickens, raising them for eggs and for meat. That is really all. No large animals, no horses, no cows, no nothing like that.
Another question for Mr. Robinson. Can any of that be done in R2? Does it have to be rezoned?
That is a good question, and while we're asking for the, or they're seeking agricultural zoning, to have the goats or pigs or maybe the backyard chickens may meet the standards. Under the R2 district, our chickens are not supposed to be meat chickens. The coop then therefore for meat chicken or any roosters, as well as a goat pen or pig pen, they had to meet the 300 feet and 200 feet setbacks that are required, and they had to meet those setbacks, which they failed to do in R2.
Is there any limitations on numbers?
There's no, there's no limitation on numbers.
Okay.
I mean, I could say we don't want anything massive, you know, not looking at that at all.
Yeah, your neighbors aren't managing yet.
We don't, we don't want anything huge. We're just looking to support, you know, our needs and not anything like that.
Would you be willing to? Would you be willing to limit the number of pigs that you, the pot-bellied pigs, limited to pot-bellied pigs and limit the number of them from this point on?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, they, they can be, in numbers, they're pretty big nuisance, even though they're loud, even though they're small.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I noticed you've got, one residence is not far off the property line.
Right.
Would you be willing to limit one pig as a pet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like I said, that's all I'm asking, really. She's a good girl. She doesn't cause problems, never been off the property, nothing.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
Mr. Robinson, I know commercial chicken houses are a lot of thing of a fast and ball and game, but under A1 zoning, could someone build a commercial chicken house under the A1 zoning?
Amen. Okay, technically agricultural facilities such as chicken houses, which could be private or commercial, would need to meet the 100 feet setback on the front and 50 feet on rear and sides in the A1 district.
So on this particular piece of property, it would fit on there if it was purchased by another purchaser, it could fit in one?
That's correct.
Anything else from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners?
I have a question. This, your family farm, it's just for sustainability, like for your own personal meat?
Yes.
Eggs? Because a lot of families are doing that around the country now.
That's all that we're really looking to do?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much. You may take your seat, and I will see if anybody else wishes to speak.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf of this application? Does anyone here wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding the application? Please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Andrea Bickelman. I live at 1124 Ridge Road, so my property is immediately to the right of the Henry's property, that long piece of pie property. I wrote some things down. Approximately five years ago on Christmas Day, there were two goats in my yard. I called Brian, Mr. Henry, and his response was, "We're out of town." So I had to corral his goats back, my driveway is a quarter of a mile long to my house, and that's how far they had gotten into my property. I was raised in East Cobb, sorry, I'm not an original Paulding Countyer. I've been here 15 years, and my husband said he never thought he'd see his East Cobb girl walking a goat on Christmas Day. Summer of 2018, they had two dogs at the time, one small black dog got out innumerable times, talked to Mr. Henry to keep the dog in. They were unable to keep it in. This is in the front part of the yard where the chain link is. The dog was able to get out from under the chain link. I got a call when we were out of town from Mr. Henry, and he said that they had been out of town and they came back, and the little black dog had died because someone had tied it up in the yard, I assume trying to keep it in the property and not being hit, and it had died when it was, they were out of town. Summer of 2020, the whole herd of goats was in my yard up by my fence, and my small box, old boxer girl chased them back into their property over a goat fence that was smashed down and had not been maintained. Numerous times that summer, saw goats in the Hastings' yard, which is the next neighbor to our, to our left. I tried to shoo them over, after multiple calls to Mr. Henry, and he said to me, I didn't know how they were getting out of his property. That was in the area that is behind the chain link fence, and it is barbed wire. In this summer, in June of 2021, I helped Mr. Henry get his goats back in the yard, and I said to him, "How many do you have?" And he said, "I don't know." He said that he had had to get them out, get them back into the yard three times that day, and he again said to me, he didn't know how they were getting out. July of this year, pigs were out in our yard in the narrow part up by where the Hastings' live. I got them corralled back into the yard, and they were able to just scoot under the fence. I called Brian to let him know, and he said, "We're out of town." So they, in their property, they left their animals all over the yard, up on the porch, often see goats on picnic tables and things like that. They had about 50 to 60 blueberry bushes from the previous owner, and those goats have eaten all the blueberries. I mean, I realize that that, the blueberry bushes, I realize that that's their property, but just tearing up the yard. Just a comment on how they maintain their property. After a storm this spring, they had an awning that was over their deck, and it laid in the yard up against the fence that borders our property for about six months. It's finally gone now. They don't keep up their grass. They have four lawnmowers strewn about their property. There's a tarp over the barn that's been there over a year, and my husband has reported six to seven times of pushing the goats back over the fence. Our complaint is smell nuisance. My husband has 50 to 60 rose bushes, roses sharing all over the yard. We've done countless things to improve our property, and we do not want to be living next to a farm. We bought in this area because it was residential. The Henry's are nice people, but we do not want to live next to a farm, and we've been there 15 years, they've been there 10. So they did not, this all is a new thing that they've started adding this to the property. I didn't realize, I've never lived in a more rural setting before this, what I had in, that I could complain about. I didn't know who to complain about. I have always called him, and he's never been nasty or anything like that, but we don't want to live next to a farm.
Thank you.
Morning, Chairman, or afternoon. My name is Jeff Hardy. I live in 1192, which is to the other side of Mr. Henry. Have the whole property line within there. We moved in there three years ago, lived on Nibelro before, but lived in there a long time. And as you can see, there's one property that's agricultural there. It's a large tract, as in families have done in a long time, you know, tax benefits or whatever, they have maintained that. Look all around it, there's, I looked on the tax documents map the other day and counted 50 lots. Look all around it, there's, I looked on the tax documents map the other day and counted fifty lots from two to twelve acres. No more A ones there. We don't have to have an imagination of what it would be like if they did A one, because for the whole three years I've been there, they've been using it as an A one property. Today, there's same thing, there's goats. Last summer of COVID, they had the idea of bringing in pigs, not the pot-bellied ones, the real pigs, for feed stock to grow. I met them along the fence line down there one day, and I'm like, you know, live and let live, you know, sure property, but when it becomes a problem, you know, then we'll address it. And of course, that summer, with pigs living thirty-five foot from my property line, a hundred and sixty-five foot from my house, it became a real problem. I mean, the smell, have people over to the backyard and barbecues and stuff, you couldn't, I mean, terrible smell. I mean, literally, I did on the tax map, the measurement thing. Where their pen is, it's, if you see on my property, you see the white barn there. If you go straight over, there's a little clearing, that's where their pig pen is, or was. There's no pigs there now. Because I did address it with them. I said, you know, look, this is, this is terrible. We can't live like this. I have also on the house next door, which I ran out, my renters are like, what in the world's going on here? So the only recourse I had was like, I read the zoning laws. I went and looked in, I said, you have to have two hundred feet. He's got, at that point, there's two hundred feet, period. There's no more. At that, where it chokes in there, if you do it on the tax map, it's like a hundred ninety-six feet wide. If you go to A one, you have to have a fifty cent, fifty foot setback. He could have a pig pen in the middle of his clearing and to my porch on my back house, of my houses, like a hundred and sixty feet. Wind direction, we're west of him, or east of him. I mean, it's just really unbearable. My wife has pictures of the last two years, three years, fifty or sixty pictures of animals in our yard, goats on our deck messing up our wood. You know, goats and pigs getting in on Nibelrod, I mean, on Ridge Road, almost causing accidents. I've had to, um, you know, put goats back in this front gate, because when we had a problem with the pigs, he got rid of those. He kept his pot bellies, whatever, still not in, or he's still, you know, breaking zoning laws. So the goats were getting out daily, like the other neighbor said. So he finally put those up into his front yard, which is chain link fence. And it's only the very front, probably three quarters of an acre or something there, that where he's keeping the animals now, because that's the only part to secure is chain link. Everything behind it, the fences have deteriorated, there's nothing there. On my side, it's actually empty. And, you know, he does, in the back right now, he has, you know, several corrals, I mean, several like pens where he keeps his pot bellies and ducks and chickens and roosters and... And I know you said, Chris, that is probably, that building was in zoning, but I don't know what the setback is on his barn, but it's got to be within fifteen feet, I know, of the setback. So I'm not sure if that's an issue, but anyway, it's just, um, I mean, we lived it for three years being A one, trying to be neighborly. The only thing I had was the zoning laws to get him to step back his operation sometimes. Because, I mean, you know, I'm sure they do want it to sustain, but, you know, I don't know if you've been around pig pens, but, you know, we lived through one last summer and, you know, it was terrible. We couldn't have people over. And, and that's my property, yes. All those pictures on our property, yes, sir. And if you just look at this lot in general, it's long and narrow for these proposed setbacks on A one, fifty feet from a property line. I mean, there's no way in there that he could do that, but as it, as it is residential now, two hundred feet, there's no way he can do that. He's got two hundred foot wide property. There's nowhere on this property right now he could legally have what he has. So just to bend the zoning back to benefit him in this whole area that's residential, I just don't see how that would benefit any of us as neighbors. And we do have a letter from the people who are renting a rental house next to me about how this has disturbed him. My wife has a letter she might want to read.
I'm going to skip some of it, I, I did. Because he already touched Tracy Hardy, eleven ninety-two Ridge Road. I'm going to skip some of this because he's already touched on it, but, um, as you can see from the pictures provided, we dealt with each of the animals not being sufficiently contained. They've wandered onto our property and neighbor's properties on multiple occasions. On these occasions, the goats have come on, into our yard and onto our sidewalk, front and back porches. They have proceeded to urinate and defecate numerous times on our sidewalk, sidewalk and porches, eating our bushes and potted plants, as well as knocked over a table on our front porch, breaking a lantern, sitting on it. The pigs have also wandered into our yard and caused property damage by rooting up the grass in large patches and around trees. Several of the chickens have also come onto our property on too many times to count. Um, yet another issue with the animals is the pungent smell coming from the pig pen. Um, that was when they had the big pit, big pit, uh, pigs. But if this is approved, then they'll be able to have those again. The situation, um, like he said, made it almost unbearable for us to be out there, much less have people over, um, to our, our home. If anyone did come over to our home, the first thing they commented on is, what is that smell? And besides, um, it being a nuisance, um, and he pointed out this too, I don't know if you, I mean, I'm sure you guys are aware of Ridge Road and how busy it's become in the last few years. Um, I'm not sure if it's a, uh, state highway or whatever. But it is, we, there are tractor trailers coming down that road. There's, there's countless traffic at all hours. But, so we witnessed, um, you know, the animals getting out. We, I've witnessed personally, um, the pigs getting out into the road and cars having to stop. They actually ran up our driveway, um, to get to the road, so they were once again on our property. And those animals, the farm animals are a nuisance, but they also have a couple of dogs. They do have a rooster that crows at all hours of, you know, the day and night. They have the chickens, et cetera. Um, they have a duck, but they have, so several farm animals. And like he said, they've been keeping these farm animals on their property, um, the entire time that we've been there illegally. They've shown through past experience that they're not able or concerned with making the well-being of the animals a priority by allowing them to roam on numerous occasions. We've chosen in the past to deal with the Henrys directly, um, but, you know, since it's got to this point, of course, we do not want it to be rezoned. And then, you know, we've tried being polite, neighborly, but at some point, we had to put our family's, um, safety, well-being, and, um, you know, above our neighbors. So being that the property is, uh, in question is very narrow, it makes the pens, the coops, the smell very noticeable. We are, um, the pen was, the pig pen was probably from here to that wall from the corner of our house. It was not very far at all, so you can imagine how, how bad the smell was. We also worry that if the rezoning application is approved, that our property values will go down. Nobody, you know, wants to live next to a pig pen. And so, um, it would be detrimental to us, but it would also be detrimental to our, our other neighbors as well, as far as property values. So we just respectfully, you know, request that y'all deny the application. They haven't been able to contain the animals. If you drive by, they haven't been well kept, um, as far as the pens, as far as the fences, and as far as around their homes. So, um, that's really all we have to say. But as you can see from the pictures, we've had a lot, those, the dates are on the back. It's not just a one or, you know, twice thing. It's, it's several. It's been over the last couple of years.
Thank you very much. All right, we have...
I'm sorry. Um, I do have a letter from our neighbor as well. They were not able to be here. Do I just give it to you or?
Pass that to Chris, he can get it to us. Is there anyone else? Well, we have run out of time on the opposition's portion. If you want to make a very quick statement, ma'am, please sign in, state your name.
Quick statement?
Yes, ma'am.
We live eleven twenty-two Ridge Road, right next door. Jesse Hasty. Yeah, Hasty. And, uh, I've been dealing with these people or these animals a long time, and I have been, went over to his house, uh, can't think of his name, but the, the one with the animals, and told him one time, there was a big, huge pig in my yard. And he came over there and I don't know what he, I guess he got it. But, uh, there's been pigs over there this summer rooting in my yard, rooting up my lawn and my front yard. We live about three hundred feet off the road, uh, but we're right next door to him. And chickens every day, every single day. The other day, I went outside, I was going out my, down, from downstairs, and there was, I opened the door and this rooster was standing there and he started crowing, you know? I mean, it scared me to death. I didn't know, I mean, those, that rooster crows constantly, but I didn't know he was in my yard. But as far as the chickens, they don't bother me that much, but it's just the pigs and that pig pen or sty, whatever, the hole they have down there where they wallow, it smells so bad. And last summer, it was so bad, I told him about it too, that we, we couldn't hardly sit on our deck, which is on the back of our house, because it stunk so bad, and we had, uh, flies.
Ms. Hasty.
Real bad flies.
Ms. Hasty, just one moment. We've exceeded the fifteen minutes, so if you'll hold on just a second.
Okay.
We have her in mid-conversation with us, so if I can have a motion from the planning commission to extend the time by five minutes?
I won't need that much.
I have a motion to extend the time for speaking by Mr. Henson by five minutes and a second by Ms. Seaver. Is there a, all four?
Thank you.
All against? Please proceed.
I just want to tell you about the goats.
Yes, ma'am.
And eating my flowers. God, I mean, really, they're, you know, they come over in the yard and they ate the flowers. My husband helped that man get him back, get them back in the pen and everything, but it, it's just, it, it's just terrible. And they cannot keep those animals confined. And the dogs, they have four dogs. And the other day, I was coming down my driveway and this big dog, I mean, he was that big, he was barking at my car. I was like, what the heck is this? You know, anyway, I just blew my horn, kept blowing it, blowing it. I thought my husband would think I was crazy, but he didn't even hear it. But anyway, uh, the dog went away, and, uh, the dogs are always over there, especially that big one. But, uh, you know, I don't think they ought to be allowed to have animals, period. I mean, I have a cat, an inside cat, and, uh, she does not make flies, I'm sure. Uh, I let her go out a couple of times a day and walk around, but, uh, you know, if I wanted animals, I'd get animals. But I don't, and I don't want them in my yard. I think the chickens are pretty, but, you know, they don't hurt anything, but other than that, I don't want any goats. I don't want any, to see goats laying on my neighbor's front porch on the couch. I don't want them, see them anywhere. And I don't want the smell, and I don't want the flies. But anyway, we've been living there twenty-seven years.
Yes, ma'am.
Never had this problem before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are going to bring the comment section to a close. There are, is, there are minutes remaining for the applicant, but if, uh, Ms. Henry, if you would come back around? Certainly. If you would please have a seat right there, sir. Uh, we're going to talk to staff for just a moment.
All right, so I thank everybody here in the audience. We're seeing there's issues with goats, pigs, chickens, roosters. Can you explain or educate us on what R two requires? I know, going back to a previous question, for the same animals that it's currently zoned for versus going to ag? Because if it's rezoned, I have the feeling it's being rezoned because of the problems. I would just, I think you see where I'm going, so if we can look at what the requirements are in the R two zoning countywide for chickens, goats, and...
I think the requirement you're looking for is roaming at large. Uh, that is not allowed in R two district or a A one district. Uh, that means the pig, pig pen, they are not, they're supposed to stay in the pen. If they have goats and such, they have to have a crab. They can roam at large on their property, but they're not to get off the property. Now, that's a whole nother issue that would have to be addressed, not only by the zoning, but also by animal control. The, uh, larger animals such as horses and such, we get back to, they could have a fence along the property line and they can graze up to the fences, but their barn and structure has to be three hundred feet from our front property line and two hundred feet from rear and side property lines in an R two district, and one hundred feet from the front property line and fifty feet in the A one district on the rear and side.
Okay.
So it's really the distance from the setback, but on both cases, they're not supposed to get off the property. They're supposed to be, uh, and there's other provisions in the zoning ordinance that fences shall be maintained.
And is this the survey we have for it?
That's one of the older survey of that original property there.
Chris, what would be allowed in the A one zoning that would not be allowed in the R two zoning?
Actually, there's no difference.
A reduction in setbacks?
It comes down to distances to property lines. The uses are identical, except for one thing, in the R two district, you can have backyard chickens, which is five hens, and that coop, which could, a hundred square feet, has to be forty-five feet from property lines and a hundred feet from the front property line. That's just for five hens.
Okay, so what is the purpose of the rezoning? The setbacks?
There, that is one aspect of setbacks, yes.
Because they're wanting to build something else on the property that they would need larger set, or lessen the setbacks be lesser?
It's just that use, give another example. This is one aspect, a way to go about it, to reduce setbacks for their structures and the uses on the property.
But you're saying the uses would be the same, correct?
They would be the same. So there is a possibility that they could ask for a variance of those setbacks.
And are the structures that are required for the three types of, of farm animals we've heard about, are they there? Do they have a current, you know, pig pen or, forgive me, I don't have any, so I don't know what you'd call them, but...
I, I did know that they had a pig pen. I wasn't quite sure of the distance and how it was maintained.
Because based on the photos that we all saw, they're not contained at all regardless of zoning. They're, they're roaming everywhere. And if that comes back to animal control or marshals or, have we seen, do we know of any evidence of that being reported? Or is this the first time?
No, this is, that was reported back when the dog and one of the pigs got loose, and I know that the marshals addressed that situation.
Any further questions to staff?
That, that issue is not going to take care of the smell, though. That's the biggest. I know that's got to be one of the biggest problems with the proximity of the property line, especially near the front. Just looking at it on what I'm seeing here, it doesn't look like it's even, um, it might be an acre wide at the nearest point, but it doesn't seem to be. And that's where the residences are, is at the nearest point.
And the smell sounds like everybody's saying it's more of a swine.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may add, just so the, the commission is aware, knowing...
Mr. Chair, if I may add, just so that the commission is aware, knowingly allowing livestock to run on the property of another without permission is actually a state law crime, punishable by six months in jail or $500 fine, up to $500 fine. It is not an ordinance violation, although I'm sure there could be, one could be found, but it is a state law violation. Just, just so people know, when you see livestock running at large with regularity and not an accident, there may be other, other factors to consider.
I have one other question for Mr. Robinson. When it comes to pot bellies, are they, I mean, can I have one in my house in R2 zoning?
Pot belly or any type of pig is considered a non-nomistic feral, and so it'd be treated the same as a goat.
So if this particular zoning had a stipulation added to it, just like the last one of no swine, there'd be no pot belly?
There would be no pot belly, there would be no, any type of swine.
Okay. Any further questions to staff? Board of Commissioners?
So, very wonder, I just had, had, so, I remember once while we had fence problems and stuff like that, so I was looking on the back of these dates, it seemed like the door here was moving back in the middle of 2020 and then there was one March of this year. What does the fence look like? I mean, what kind of quality of fence do we have? Whether, I mean, once it looks old, but still keep in, I have a neighbor that, I go back there and one of her horses on my property, I put her right up and she's just, we're just getting public here and it's open. Is it just old fencing that's down and not being kept up, or what kind of shape is it?
Are you speaking to the applicant?
Yes.
You haven't spoken yet, so if you'd state your name and make sure you sign in.
Okay, my name is Brian Henry. I am, it is me and my wife and my son that currently reside on the property. And to answer your question about the fence, it is, right now, it is about a four-foot high field fence. I believe it is well, a welded wire field fence. The people who lived there prior had goats. I, we wrongly assumed that the fence was up to containing the goats. We have found out that if the goats start standing on it, especially in certain places, the posts aren't secure and stuff, so the goats were able to push the fence down and began to go over with ease. That is why we have started going around and we are now working on replacing the fence with cattle panels in order to correct that problem.
How long is it going to take you to correct the problem?
Well, right now, as far as I know, we had the problem in July where it was a pig and a dog. The pig that had gotten out was one that, as my wife said, was not one of our pigs. We don't know where it came from, but we have caught it and we have contained it now.
Okay.
Our other animals, I do not, the dog, our dog has gotten out a few times recently, but other than that, since we had the issue with the marshal service, I have not known of any of our animals, except for the dog, a couple of times, getting out, getting off of our property. We do have, for a while, the goats were in the main part of the property that you heard people referring to. We have moved them back a little further into the chicken area and into what was normally our garden area, and they are currently contained there. And that fence is holding them.
Okay. So you think the problem has been rectified as of today?
As of today, we cannot let them further back because that fence has not been secured, but where they are currently at, I do believe they are secured, listening to my neighbors talk about it. The main issue I am hearing is the smell with the pigs. Like my wife said, I have no problem doing a stipulation about the no swine. She said she would like to keep the one, one pot belly pig that is our pet, but other than that, I have no problem adding a stipulation to the zoning that there is no swine to be housed on the property.
How many goats do you have on the property?
We currently have four, is all.
Because I saw in the pictures, quite a few goats.
We have gotten rid of some of them.
What are you going to do to get rid of the smell?
My understanding was, and my belief was, lots of the smell came from the pigs, and it wasn't only the pigs and the pig pen, the pig food. We were feeding them slop that we were getting from a food pantry. So without having the pigs anymore, we will no longer be getting that slop, which I think those two issues would resolve the smell problem. If not, I would love to hear from my neighbors and see if the smell is still a problem, to see what we could do to resolve that.
Is getting slop from a food place illegal to feed?
Yes, it is.
Do you have to cook it first?
No. What the slop is, is the food pantry, it's a food pantry in Douglasville. They're open one day a week.
Okay.
They get their donations from grocery stores and everything. What doesn't go out that week, the fruits and vegetables and stuff aren't going to keep for another week. So they bag it up and we get bags of fruits, vegetables, bread products, all that kind of stuff that we turn around and feed the pigs.
Well, I know when I was principal of the school, our slop that went out, it could not be given to pigs whatsoever. It was period, no. No. So I don't know if that light, that has changed. I can't see that it's changed, but that's been a few years ago.
Was that a?
That was a state, that was a state law.
That was a state law? I am not aware of that if it is.
Is that the same thing called rickets? Disease you get from feeding your pigs. Well, you mean, if you go to the hospital with it, you actually, it is, it is ill.
Mr. Henry, I mean, you're agreeable to a stipulation of no swine. So that's going to solve all that problem?
Yes.
Sir, I have a question. What, what is the purpose of you going from the R2, which is allowing the same animals that you have now, to the agricultural?
The purpose is, right now, I did not realize it until my neighbor brought it up to me, that the setbacks, we are allowed, you are allowed to have the same animals between both zonings, but for the residential zoning, you have to have, for both of them, you have to have shelters for the animals. The shelters have to be 200 feet setback from the sides. With the agricultural zoning, the shelters only have to be, I believe it is 45 feet setback from the sides.
What shelters do you, are you speaking of?
Right now, we have a two-stall, a two-stall barn or a pole, it's actually a pole barn that has two stalls in it. It has three, we use one of those stalls for storage. The chicken coop that we have built, we house more than the five hens, but, and then the pig pen, all of that would have to be, right now, it's supposed to be 200 feet from each side. With rezoning it, it would only have to be 45 feet from each side, if, I believe I've got those.
Are you planning on building more structures on the property? Are you just trying to be and stay in compliance with what you have?
We're trying, we're trying to get in compliance with the county law.
Do you have any plans to add more chicken coop or chickens to it? You said you currently have about five.
No, the current zoning would allow five. Right now, we have two roosters and we have about 15 hens right now. But, I mean, personally.
Currently, it sounds like you have swine causing a problem with smell, that if you go away from that, you could increase in it. Change that over to chickens causing the smell.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm not looking at doing any large.
Then that's my question, that's exactly my question.
Chicken production or anything like that. And I mean, whatever stipulations need to be put on this, I am not opposed to that.
Let me ask you this, are you planning on raising chickens? Or are you just having them there as pets for the eggs? Or what is your reason for having the chickens?
We've had chickens for both reasons. We've had chickens for eggs. We were, we had egg chickens for lots longer than anything else, but then we have also got some meat chickens that we bought as baby chicks and raised up for meat, simply for our family. So we're using, we're, have chickens for both purposes. Right now, we currently do not have any meat chickens. We only have egg chickens.
Well, my, my purpose is of asking you that question is apparently the roosters are also a problem. What if you get rid of, go to the county standards and not have roosters? Are you okay with that?
If that's what it would take. I like the roosters, I like the sound of the roosters hollering, but if that's what it would take, if that's what would make, make everyone happy and make everyone get along, I don't want to have issues with my neighbors. But if that's what it would take, okay.
All right. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions to the applicant?
It seems like the, the main issue with your neighbors is the fencing, that their animals are getting out on other, on your neighbor's property. And so you talk about these cattle panels, I'm a part-time farmer myself, cattle panels will not contain goats, especially the smaller goats, they'll just go right through them because the bars on those panels are, they're 12 inches or even more in some cases, so I don't see that's going to be a useful remedy. And so what you, that's, that's the main issue, is the animals getting on other people's property. So what kind of remedy do you propose to fix this situation?
Okay, and I believe, I may have misspoke, what big, the, oh, goats that we have are actually, actually La Manchas, and we do have a couple, or one, mini La Mancha is the breeds that we have. They are dairy goats. And maybe I am misspoke, speaking, when I say they are cattle panels. It is not the big tube panels that you see with cattle sometimes. These are 16 feet long, heavy gauged wire, that the holes range from, I believe it is four by, or six by six down to, at the top, down to around a four by four, or, no, it's a three by four inch hole down at the bottom. So it's a, it's not the big tube panels with none of the crossbars. These are a heavy gauged wire.
So I know exactly what you're speaking about now, I'm familiar with that. So how many acres are, are you actually, do you actually have fenced? And you propose to put these panels up?
I have the panels currently to do the side, right side of the property, from where the chain link ends, which if you look at the map of the property, that is the narrowest place where it kind of dips in on that one side. To go back, I am not sure how many acres that is. My guess would be a couple acres. I'm getting panels for one section at a time, trying to get the panels up in that section to fix that, but like I said, right now, I have the pigs all contained in pens. As far as I know, none have gotten out, and I have the goats contained in the chicken area and in my garden area, and as far as I know, none of them are getting out of that area as well, until I can get the fence properly secured the rest of the way around.
So do you plan to use these panels all the way around?
I'm not going to, I'm not, at this point, I'm not planning on doing all six acres, but I am planning on using these panels. Past the chain link fence is about a two acre or so field, and I am planning on using these panels the entire way around that field in order to secure that and give the goats more grazing area.
Would you be willing to make that a stipulation?
Yes. The only issue with that would be a timeframe as far as me getting the money and getting the work done. I don't have, I don't have the money right now to go and buy the 60 cattle panels or whatever it would take to finish boxing that off. So it would just be a matter of time, but yes, we can do that as a stipulation to get that done.
What kind of time are you referring to?
I would hope I could have that done within the year, but like I said, right now, I feel like I've got the goats and stuff contained.
Any further questions to the applicant? Briefly, sir, please come forward. If you'd state your name, please, and sign in.
My name is Gary Maynard. This is my daughter and son-in-law and grandson, and my wife and I own the property. And as to the fencing issue, I'll make sure that's addressed. I can help them get the fencing issue addressed with either the cattle panels or extending five, the, the chain link fence in the front's five feet tall, that's why the goats don't get over it. We'll extend the chain link fence around. From the way I understood it, the issue is, if they, if it stays R2, they can't have goats at all. They can't have any foreign animals. All they can have is five hens, period. So the main issue for the zoning was to allow them to have eight or 10 goats and eight or 10 chickens and, and now the pigs, I concede that's an issue. They'll get rid of the pigs, eliminate that, we'll do whatever it takes on the fencing. That's what, that's what, that's what the rezoning was about, so. But I can put a, I can put up three-month timeframe on the fence, if that's what you want, or six months, whatever's, whatever you guys think's reasonable.
Are there any questions to Mr. Maynard? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir. You have to take your seat. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2021-24Z. We have the possibility of a stipulation regarding the limitation on eliminating the opportunity to have goats, stipulation on fencing to be considered.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion for Mr. Henson to deny.
I have a motion from Mr. Henson to deny. Is there a second? I have a second for Mr. Leggett. All in favor? All opposed? Motion fails. So, at this time, I will entertain a second motion regarding to this application.
I'll make a motion to approve with stipulations.
I have a motion to approve. Now, you say with the stipulations. We have one.
With the stipulations of the one listed by staff, number two, no swine, number three, goats limited to four, and the last being chickens limited to ten, no rooster.
I have the listed stipulation by staff, and again, this is a motion to approve from Mr. Steele, with an added stipulation of no swine, a second added stipulation of limiting the number of goats to four, and a third added stipulation of limiting the number of chickens to ten.
Correct.
Period.
Period. No rooster.
No rooster. Sorry.
And I, I think we need to add, I'd like to add a timeframe for them to be able to secure the fence.
I'll add a sixth stipulation.
Adequate fencing should be added with a timeframe.
If Mr. Steele will clarify, continue to clarify his motion, he does not need a second on the motion.
I would like to add a stipulation to my list I already gave you for a timeframe of four months to have all adequate fencing in, to contain animals. With that being said, if anything were to leave now, I mean, you have to follow normal procedures of local and state.
Okay. So, understanding the stipulations that have been added in addition to the one already in place by staff, Mr. Steele's motion is on the floor. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes four, two, one. That's four, four, four voted for it, two voted against it, one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, can you, can you repeat the, the original motion, number of votes on the denial?
The original motion was to deny. There were two voted for it to deny, four voted against it to deny, and one abstention. Okay. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. For their consideration, the applicant must be present for it to be considered. And again, I would go ahead and just reiterate what has already been discussed here to a great extent. Any violation of animals getting out on property, this has no impact on that per se. You, you still, as the owner of these animals, are responsible for containing them to your property. And the neighbors that are impacted by that, please either work with your neighbor, or if you feel you must, call the marshal's office. Mr. Robinson.
Okay, next application, twenty-two-one twenty-five Z, application by Joanne, Joan Larson and James and Erica Carter, requesting to rezone two adjacent tracts totaling twenty-four point four-four acres from R2 Suburban Residential to A1 Agricultural to build a barn and utilize for horse pasture. Property is located in landlots one fifteen and one sixteen, District Three, Section Three. Property is located on Overlook Trail south of Davos Bridge Road and Overlook Trail intersection. It's in Commission Post Four. Staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and we've noted no opposition on this. I do want to go ahead and clarify since it's been a lot of discussion today, due to the size of the tract of twenty-four plus acres, that staff did not recommend no swine on this one.
If you would please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Chairman. I'm James Carter. It's two pieces of property. It's actually a fourteen-acre piece, ten-acre piece. My wife and I own the fourteen. Mother-in-law owns the ten. We're doing R2 to A1 to allow for setbacks to be closer for a barn on the property line between my property and my mother-in-law's property.
I think it goes without saying after what we've just gone through that containing your animals to your property is of vital importance to everyone.
Yes, sir.
You're familiar with the stipulation added by the staff of no canine business as it is defined? Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Guess I'll ask you. Do you plan on having any swine?
No swine.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? At this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application twenty-two-one dash twenty-five dash Z.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Aston. All in, yes.
Clarifications that I did not hear with stip.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With stip. Thank you.
On stipulation.
I was excited, sorry. So, motion to approve with stipulations by Mr. Henson. I'm assuming that you second that, Mr. Aston? Okay. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson.
Okay, last application, twenty-two-one twenty-six Z, application by Amanda Drummond and Christopher Norris, requesting to rezone ninety-three acres from R2 Suburban Residential to Agricultural District A1 to utilize property for recreational farm and equine purposes. Property is located in landlots ten eighty-three, eleven fifty, eleven fifty-five, and twelve twenty-two, District Two, Section Three. Property is located on the northwest side of Marshall Fuller Road, north of Amanda Drive. It's in Commission Post Two. Staff has recommended approval with the one stipulation. As, since the property is ninety-three plus acres, we did not add, add the swine on this one also, and we've got no noted opposition. Application is present.
If you would please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Christopher James Norris. I wish to have the property zoned for agricultural, for equine use, small farm. The only thing I didn't, I would like to request removal of stipulation for the canine use, or I don't know if you had that one on there or not.
It is on there.
It is on there. Partially just because I didn't want to be limited to it. I feel like I've got plenty of area that it won't be an issue where it'd be, for it to come up in the future. My wife and I are in canine dog clubs. We wouldn't mind hoping seeing an event every now and again, if that's a possibility. I have four dogs myself. I just don't, I don't plan on having any kind of puppy mill or anything like that, so, but I just didn't want to be limited to it.
I think what we're talking about here is a canine business, boarding dogs, stuff like that. As far as your own personal dogs, it doesn't apply to that.
Okay.
If that's your concern.
The other concern is possibility of breeding purposes in the future. Like I said, I'm not planning on doing any kind of multi-breeding or anything like that. We do belong to a dog club. We do attend shows and such. We have champions, our dogs. So, I didn't realize that was a stipulation until recently my wife spoke with Chris about it, or someone within. Yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman.
What breed of dog are you?
We have Westies, we have Kerry Blue, and a Yorkie.
Chris.
I was just going to add that we, we're okay removing that stipulation due to the size of the property, the, also the rural nature of the area there. And I wanted to make sure one more.
There any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I have one. So, I, I think going back to what Mr. Leggett was talking about with the business side of it, what we've seen in the past would be based on like proximity. So, if you said that I'm going to breed dogs, I'm going to breed them in my house, or I'm going to build a kennel behind the house, and you're in this small neck of your property up closer to the road where you're beside a subdivision, you're more likely to have someone, you know, call you, complain with the noise if you were more in the center of your property, but with a ninety-acre piece. So, what is your, if you're going to breed, where, what do you plan on doing?
It wouldn't necessarily be to an extent of having kennels. We do have smaller dogs, other than the Kerry Blue, which is still, by most people's standards, a smaller dog. We are currently, we've got a building permit for a house. We're currently building, and it's pretty much right where the green writing is, below the twenty-two-one, twenty-six Z or whatever. So, it's not in the neck of the property. And to give you scope, I mean, that's a full-size subdivision right there beside the neck of the property. We're not confined in space. The other butts up to the power lines, and I've got a neighbor to the other side of me that has four or five blue-tick hounds. I don't think he's going to have a problem with any noise or anything of that nature.
Only one you'd have problems with is the subdivision of the New Georgia Meadows there.
That's why I was asking about kennels. I mean, if you keep it in your house, and your house is back there.
Right, yeah. I mean, I don't plan on breeding tons of dogs, and right now, we've got all males except for one.
You're building a slab, you're building a basement house. Building a basement?
We're putting it in the basement, yes.
Basement?
Yeah, we're having a basement house. Are you asking if I'm putting a kennel in it?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if you were breeding in your basement, then you would have to build it out.
We don't have anything at the point, at this point. Like I said, all we have is the building permit for a house.
Okay.
We're currently in the process of creating that area. We will have a horse pasture, and I'm planning on putting that towards the back part of the section, or, I know it's got divided up into three or four sections there, so I guess from the beginning it'd be in the third section up, is where we're planning on putting a horse pasture area. We don't plan to have a lot of horses. It's more or less just our own. We don't have any as of yet, but we just really would like to be without any stipulation on that because of future changes that may happen.
Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I meant to say it a few minutes ago and had to look it up. If they did decide to do a canine breeding, boarding, or such business and had the kennels and such, that still would have to remain two hundred feet from any property line. So, I just wanted to make that.
So, Chris, on this right here, you say no boarding, rescue, or training. Now, he mentioned breeding. So, could we keep this in and he would still be able to breed the animals, but not board, rescue, or train?
And he made a comment earlier, too, that you talked about special events.
Yeah, so we're in a, we are in a dog-specific club with West Highland White Terriers. They do rescues. I have boarded, per se, one or two dogs in the past, not more than two at a time, usually typically down to one. I haven't done it in a couple of years because we had a child and he was underage where they would let us do so. If you know anything about rescues, sometimes they come in, they're a bit violent, or they're not used to being around children, and you have to work with them a little bit. Again, these are small lap dogs. These are not pit bulls or German Shepherds of anything of that nature. As far as what I was saying about the event, yes, we, we are in a dog club. We have struggled to have event space in the past year just because of the COVID shutdown and everything. We've done stuff in people's backyards and stuff like that. Most people live in subdivisions, and it's not ideal. Not saying that it's going to be a regular thing. They have, they have a club meeting every two months. And they usually have two club meetings that are indoor without the dogs at the end of the year just because of weather. So, I wouldn't say that it's going to be a full-on agility training or, or hounds or anything like that, but where the case come up in the future, I would rather not be stipulated by it.
He would have to come in for a business license and other things like that where we would ensure the-
That, that's correct, that he would have to have animal, animal control establishment permitting and come in. He'd also have to have a business license, and we'd have to verify the kennels meet that two-hundred-foot setback.
And that's for him just doing basic breeding?
That's right, and that, that's the stipulation that we're okay removing, or if y'all would like to remove it, we're okay with that. It would include, it's any type of really canine business, the boarding, rescue, training, et cetera, is just kind of examples.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. At this time, I entertain a motion for application twenty-two-one dash twenty-six dash Z.
I have a motion to approve with zero stipulations.
I have a motion to approve, removing the listed stipulation from Mr. Leggett. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? I'm sorry, could this right-hand side, let me show again? Ellis, were you up?
I'm up.
Okay. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion for Mr. Aston. Second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion carried.